Let's bring the October 25th, 2023. Board meeting to order. Walsh, can you read some public leaders, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a two-month agenda? Move that.
Second.
Second. We've what's there? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The roll call?
Yeah, because one zoom.
Oh, okay.
Got to count noses.
All right, Director Herrick.
Aye.
Director Mo.
Here.
Director Russo. Director Walsh.
Aye.
And Vice President Miller.
Aye. All right, public forum. Public testimony is permitted at this time only on consent counter items that another man has not listed on a posted agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency. State law prohibits the agency from taking action on any items not listed on the posted agenda. Other comment on items listed on a posted agenda will be taken by time each item is called for discussion. Do we have anybody from the audience that wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? Are we, uh, I'm not familiar with the new law. Are we required to allow Zoom people to comment?
Yes.
Do we have any, do we?
We do not have any other.
Moving on, presentations, introductions. John and Sophie, I guess we'll have to wait on that one. Christine Bennett, what are your recognition?
Oh, yes. That, where you're, so I just wanted to, I just spoke a bit about Christine in the last few weeks. But in particular, I just wanted to thank her for her ability to pick up a bunch of pieces in a very short time, put them all together, keep us on track with our budgets and our rate structures and replenish bigger project and loan agreements and all those things and get us to the point we needed to get to in such a short period. So I just wanted to commend you on your one year. Bridget has on, she's amazing. And that's all. That's what she has.
It's been a journey and it's been important years.
Perfect. All right, it's Christine. Our report for fiscal year ended in 2023, complete as I hear.
So. There you go. Actually, Brad Weller from Rogers. The Ram is here to present a presentation on our effort.
Good evening. Nice to be here today. It's time again here for reporting on the annual audit that we have completed and going to go over the results of that audit and any questions you have. So as you know, we've been through this month before, this annual requirement that we have with the town. Where we have a team of independent auditors from the district coming to review the activity over the year, supporting documents, confirmations of their parties, talking to returning.
Perpless maintenance, just slide it.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's a little bit echoey and spotty, but I'll try.
Push it on.
It's on.
Are yours done?
It's red.
Bye. There's his work. His darn wires, darn wires. It is being replaced. We did get, we got a bit, so.
By the way, it worked at order pump today when I tested everything.
Plus it's 5:05.
Yeah. I'll fix soon.
So did she hear me okay or did I still got me?
Yes, I've got you now. That's perfect. Thank you.
All right, so our audit this year consisted of two phases. We did similar to the previous year. We broke up the, what we call interim phase, where we came before year end and we looked over the internal control processes that the agency has in place and we confirmed those are still in place. And then we do sample testing of various transaction cycles throughout the year, including purchasing, contracting, payable, dispatches, persons and so forth to make sure that the controls that the agency has in place are in fact working and there is any exceptions. And we did not have any exceptions. So that, that is great. That helps us to provide a plan for how that attack our year end audit. If we then did later after year ends. And we did that all late summer. And we did a hybrid approach. So we, some of our team were here for a day. And then less of our time we did remotely, I'll end this. Do you have a hour of relaxation? That's not worth it. Maybe I could just say thanks.
Yeah, again.
Again, we're running at four.
Right, right.
This is technology.
While we're waiting on that, I'll just keep going through it. So we did the hybrid approach. We some work onsite and then some work remotely. I remember a year ago when Jennifer was here and she was about to say her lies and she was introduced to us to Christine and that she was coming over. So, you know, we knew that she was new and that factors into our plan and the plan about specifically Christine. But anytime in the team and personnel, that's a really big deal for how we approach and plan our audit. And the feedback I got from my team that worked very closely with her was this did not feel like her first rodeo. So congratulations on your service, Christine, and for helping us get through this audit. Clearly she's, you know, brought some talent and experience from her previous work and that showed here. And we didn't have nearly the hiccups that click even though we have had in other agency audit where you have a change in personnel and it's really vulnerable quickly. And she's made it able to help maintain the controls and integrity of what you are doing in your agency. So that went all, all really well. And who did? In our, in the report that you have here is our independent auditors opinion. And in that opinion, we're providing an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level assurance that we can provide by professional standards. And that means there's no modifications necessary in order for the report to be in compliance with the accepted accounting principles, which is excellent. This is a comprehensive report. So beyond just the basic financial statements, you're actually producing an annual comprehensive financial report, which I will say is rare for a special district. It's common for cities that have a lot more detail funds where different parties want more detailed information. But congratulations on receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. We have information on that and I'm a technical reviewer and I can make it, which I'm reviewing of our own clients or the California clients. But we understand that process where you go through that technical review on the report each year to make sure that you're going to be able to receive that. But most of that work is really done in-house by your staff. You know, we helped to assemble and pile the information into the correct format. But this information is coming directly from the end. What, what a annual comprehensive financial report includes beyond the basic financial statements is not like perfection in the back, which gives a lot of key data and also an introductory section written by management. So that's really useful information and you just want to overall make sure of the agency. We did do this audit in conformity with government monitoring standards and that set of standards requires that we produce a report on internal control and on the clients. Internal control over compliance. And we did present that letter to management, give that to you for your records. And in that letter, there are no findings to report. That's the medium officially that we would use if there were internal control findings that were of a material or significant nature. We would communicate that through that letter. And then if they were significant, then the national would create a corrective action plan. And then we follow up on that in prior years. That's a, like, you know, that's the mode that we would give it to you. But in our days, we issued the letter saying that there were no reportable findings in your audit. So congratulations on that. That's all the staff doing their job there. So we didn't have any issues with any day testing that we did over all the different key transaction cycle areas of balances.
That's a good question.
Yes, sir.
On the second page, you just talked about significant risks. Those are different than significant findings.
Sure. Yeah. So all audits are risk-based. That's something that came through the standards about 20 years ago. It requires auditors to go through multiple steps of look, leader determining where are the significant and material risks can apply in an audit. Like where could something go wrong? Where is it most likely to go wrong? And for us to focus our efforts primarily on the areas of highest risk. So what happened two years ago, they changed a financial reporting standard. They did change the way that we do our audits with the harvest assessments. But they added additional requirement for auditors to communicate to, to you that those charter governance what any significant risks were that we identified in our audits that are, you know, needed particular attention. Every audit has risks and there are two that lead us to their bigger reporting. And both are nearly impossible to overcome if you weather those bars. So they're inherent in every audit. It's something that we have to address with every audit, one of those being management override controls. So as I mentioned, we came in during the interim period and tested the controls at various points during the year. So those might include, like, when you're going out to contracting, doing bid or contract, you have a purchasing policy that says, you know, what the limits are and whether who, how many bids you are receiving and evaluating whether they're approved, vendor, you know, they're federal funds or various different provisions in the policy. So that's the control that you put in place by policy from the board. But then it's up to management to enforce those policies. What we do is we're testing those things. So management always has the ability to override something. Basically, what we can say, the board requires us to go out to bid if it's over 50,000, say. But if they just choose not to and just do it anyway, that's, that's override the control. You said there's limits on what you should do, but they just ignore those. So that's a risk every entity has. So we communicate that in the letter as inherent risk that it can't be overcome. What we do is then do our process is test those things throughout the year. So we look at contracts that were over that limit and say, okay, well, did management override that control? And then if so, we will be reporting that too.
Right. So you didn't find anything?
So we just identify any significant risks that are, well, is inherent in the nature of your agency. So, you know, where, where that could, that can happen for certain agencies is if they have, if they're, it's known to have maybe upfront core controls over, say, their purchasing process. Maybe there was a binding prior year, intentional, you know, fraudulent activity related to purchasing, like hiring vendors that were family members, you know, and hiding concealing that in fact or something, just to come up with something. And then maybe the purchasing manager was taking kickbacks and it was, you know, it was litigated or something like that. It might put elevated risk on that area that we were going to approach a lot of different. So in our letter, we identified that as a risk and then tailored our audit procedures to see whether or not that kind of activity was taken. A risk doesn't mean that something went wrong. It's just that something that we identify as auditors that needs a different level of attention on.
Just to clarify, you didn't, we, there was none of your findings found that we overruled our existing policies or rituals? I think that's what we said.
And those, and those findings that we, I mean, not findings, significant risks that are reported in your letter are right on the two risks that we report in every entity, nearly every entity with revenue recognition. Sometimes some entities based on their nature don't have it, but practically every entity has revenue. And so the way that you, you know, address that, it's, it's just one of those things that's inherent in every model.
Yeah, it's the same, those two risks, the same ones we've had in our report over, I think, last two years, three years.
Ever, every audit that you.
Those are the changes.
We have those two risks since our standards came in play over 20 years ago. It's just that we didn't communicate to you. It's all internal in our documentation. We identify where the significant risks are. And then, and then we just tailor our audit approach to address the risks that we identified.
Cool.
Sure.
See, we covered this through the different transaction cycles on the slides up here that, that we looked at during our audit deal work. These are some of the procedures that we do in, in the audit. Deal work time, looking at the confirmation, reading minutes of your board meetings is a requirement that we do really each year. That helps us identify projects that you went through or denied. And then we'll get the financial records to see if they align with what direction you give in order to adopt it through the policy to make sure that we're updating that policy and see how it has impacted on our audit. Go to the next. All right. So the one new accounting pronouncement that's big news of the year for governments is this GATT statement number 96, which is very similar to last year when I was here talking to you about GATT statement number 87 related to leases. But one in last year's pronouncement related to leases, whether you're a store or a C, they carve out software in that, it said, oh, you're not part of that standard. They're going to be dealt with in a different way than this standard, which was not implemented until a following year. So this is subscription thing and subscription based arrangements as the software licensing buying that goes for three or five years. It's like you're leasing the right to use that software. There's just some different criteria that require them to split that out and not just combing the liquid with regular leases because just the nature of the intangibles of software is just different enough that they want to split it. So we went through that exercise with Christine to look at all of the software subscriptions you have to see whether any of those were applicable under this standard and would need to be recorded in these financial statements. And we did not have that met a threshold that requires to be reported here. That's not to say you don't have, have it, software, but depends on the nature of the agreement, most notably whether either trying to cancel. So whatever common one that that exceeds the subscription to the Microsoft Office 365. Right? It's something that's very common they use. It's usually not very significant in amount, but it can be canceled at any time. You can just choose not to use it as opposed to, you know, usually for enterprise like software, you have some kind of a non-cancelable time range that's three, five, 10 years. So although it was significant, you know, you'll probably encounter it in your respective governments hearing this. Statement number 96 or still sometimes abbreviated that has, what it's doing is very similar to the last year leases where you would have a right to use asset on the books offset with a lease liability or split a liability. So it's really on the balance sheet there. It doesn't really affect anything with what your cash arrangements are that you're, how much you're going to pay on that household contractually. This is just for financial reporting or you would recognize that right of use asset on your statement of acquisition. But it didn't apply to you this year, but because this is a change in the accounting standards. This is something that you'll evaluate every year. It's like all the other standards. See whenever it does. Then it'll follow. So financial statements are that.
Perfect.
Yeah, I covered that one at the very beginning. Got that one out of the way. That's a lot of my report. That's the best report you can get in your financial statements. Letter that we issued. So we didn't have any disagreements with management, no difficulty working with the agencies, no uncorrected misstatements. All important things that you want to know as a board member that everything is in order the way it should be. Everything that you may be interested in, but I love to take any questions to be all.
Board members?
I would just say that the, the report was very thorough. Thank you as always.
As I understood the arrangement, this is a five-year contract, three down, fourth year now, and one more to go for audits.
With, with Rams?
Yeah.
Yes. But, but I think, didn't we just, we, we had one year?
Yeah, one year and a, a year, you know.
Right. We, so we, we just renewed it for one more year.
Well, then are they, do you anticipate doing this agency's audit again next year?
Yes.
Yes.
Next year. Okay.
We're in the second of a two-year option here.
Extension.
And then at that time, the agency would go to receive other solicitations and then decide that we want to do fiscal year 25.
As we transition into the sustainability and more grants and contracts, et cetera, would you anticipate that will change how you do the audit?
We always have to look at the provisions of the grants for compliance. If the, if there are more than $750,000 in federal funds, it does significantly change the audit, but, but not something we're unfamiliar with because then it triggers what's called a single audit. And those are additional procedures that are required with how federal fund expenditures, $750,000 in one annual period or longer, I mean, or more.
And we're, we're the provisions or the requirements of a single audit for the federal loans out of federal grants. So we're well aware of it. We'll be, as we move forward, we'll be working with Rams. And then we'll decide whether we want to go out to bid or probably go back out to bid. But, you know, they're a very comfortable company and they've worked with us for many years.
So I'm glad you brought that up because if, or whenever a single audit is triggered, that results in a separate audit and then a separate report for what you're getting here. But they're nearly always done by the same firm. So if it happens in the year that we're doing the regular financial statement audit, we just do your single audit as well. And that would be the same in the future. And that's because part of the requirements is to make sure that the two reports are in sync with each other. And if you're, you know, it's, it's extremely rare that you have, the only time I've heard where you may have two different auditors involved is at the county level because they're so large and you have multiple firms doing different elements of it. But in a, in a, every city or special district that we work with or know of, your regular financial statement auditor will also do the single audit if required.
And then over time, you can continue with the same firm, but the lead auditor changes?
Correct. I can, I can serve as your lead auditor maximum of six consecutive years. And then I would be required to rotate off and not serve as a quality control partner or the engagement partner for at least one year. And that's what we did previously to this contract where I'm serving as the engagement partner. We had my business partner, Scott Mano, was the partner. And so we went out to bid. We put in a proposal under my leadership on that engagement team so that we would meet the requirements of the state controllers office to rotate at least every six consecutive years.
Okay, thank you.
We see different audit reports from different agencies that we serve on. I'm just curious. Is this more extensive than other auditing companies?
Can I understand what play?
Well, just the details, Greg, and I'm just kind of curious about what you produced at all. I'm just trying to, maybe a little bit better handle some of the other agencies with the audit reports that come out. So why they seem to be a little more tertiary than in depth?
These ones. So, so what, what you have elected to do is to report comparable statements. So if you look on, on the main numbers section, you have two columns. Not all agencies do that. That's, I think it's beneficial for you to, particularly compare it to the prior year. It's kind of see it in a short window. That's, what's the, at least the two-year trend on the account? So that gives a little bit of additional information and adds to the depth of it because then all the, you know, notice and stuff are comparable. By making this not just basic financial statements, but a act we call act for annual comprehensive financial work, this entire supplemental section here in the back of tender data statistical, this is all supplemental. This is, that's part of the act for not the basic financial statements. So it's not a requirement, but if you want to submit your report, report that award in excellence of financial reporting to the GFOA, all of the elements here are required in order to receive that award. So they, they have a few different awards. They have a budget award, can be popular, award award and this financial award. And they list criteria of things that are required to be included in their order. So as far as the detail, we are basically just applying the financial standards that are out there. I think ensure that all of the required disclosures that are required by standards are there to how they're, what level of detail. There's a bit of a, there's, you know, a preference there that you can determine. There's certain elements that have to be included, like a, a capitalizes, you have to show the breakdown of the different categories, appreciation, so forth. And we have some discretion of how the detail you want to get in. And we usually in our initial years work with management before coming to understand the needs of the users of the statement, which certainly all of you, the governor, are a day primary user. But there may be others like Grantors or other agencies that are using this information for different purposes. And we interviewed management to try to get an understanding of who's using this, what kind of questions are they asking you? And if they, if there's, say continually a question about, I wish there was more detail on, on what debt we have with the agency. We'll work in the notes and say, well, what mortgage we had in there. There, you are, you're, you're working within a boundary. You have a minimum that you have to report, say for long-term debt. And then you have boundaries on what you can say. So it's, if you read through the notes, you'll notice that they're very objective. This is what happened. This is the amount. And if, there's no, like, opinion, you know, worked into there of why it happened. The why can happen in the beginning, a little bit in management discussion and analysis, and a lot more in the introductory section. But when you get to the basic notes, the financials, we ensure that they're always objective. They're not saying, you know, we, we got additional desk, we could do this project or something. It's just very factual about this, you know, on this date this company went into, you know, into effect. Here's the interest rate, here's the term, here's the future debt requirement. It's very, like, factual and that helps to ensure, you know, consistency and comparability with other agencies that to be any kind of narrative out of the statement. You know, really put a lot of narrative into it. So I guess it's safe to say that this report goes a little bit above and beyond our minimum requirement, yes. And you're not required to do an annual comprehensive financial report. You could just do basic financial statements. So at, at a bare minimum, you have to do the, from the start, I could say this starts right here. So the basic financial statements on, could be like, after page 14. So from there to the end of the supplementary section, like this piece here is required. The additional supplemental management discussion and this is the introductory section, the statistical section, the additional information that you chose to disclose for the benefit of your users. I mean, we love to see when, like, this level of reporting because we like to seek transparency in governments. Because you never know who might be looking at this information and what they're interested in. So the more you can tell the, you know, provide information that helps to kind of tell us, especially when you get. So the more you can tell the, you know, provide information that helps to kind of tell us, especially when you get statistical information, you have a ten-year history of, say, like, usage of the treatment plan, you know, or how old, old type of permanent positions you have, or, you know, what your revenue sources are looking like over that time. You can get a lot better trend with just have a ten-year history than you can just have a comparable, uh, two years. And, and you're doing two years, which is great, and that's, that's the most I see on the statements. Uh, many agencies will only go the current year. And that's what, that's all it requires to show there. Did I, I got what you were maybe getting at?
Uh, you did, you got my mind turning about other agencies, but I appreciate it, thank you.
I'm happy to answer more if I didn't tackle it, I want to make sure, you know, I get a chance to answer any questions you may have.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, general managers' report.
Well, the only thing I wanted to point out to the board was, uh, I'm sure there's some question with regard to the brine that we shipped over to Israel. A few months ago, and just to clarify, um, the first shipment is, will actually be in port, um, on, it was supposed to be in port between twenty-seven and the twenty-ninth of this month. Um, so we were expected to be there Friday, Saturday or Sunday. Um, they don't see any issue with, um, receiving the brine from our system and continuing with the piloting of the brine. Uh, the second shipment, I think, was in mid-November and they'll, uh, process that one as well. So right now I don't see any, uh, real issues with that.
How big is the stem?
Why is it on the ship?
Twenty-two hundred seventy-five gallon tubs. And the second one was eighteen-two hundred seventy-five gallon tub.
Okay, you're talking about a shipping container.
A whole shipping container. Shifting container with loaded, uh, trailer, they drove it to Jersey and, uh, the battery they're on or put it into a shipping container. They were just giant.
I guess, I, I don't know, I always thought it was full.
One gallon joke.
Sixty hours ago.
Oh, sixty hours, all, all of, uh, the eighteen, eighteen coats?
That was last, that was last because I was so many to do it to you, seventy hours the first time was, it'd be someone the second time.
Okay. Just to kind of give you an idea, any other questions about the management report?
I just had one real quick, one, uh, Hampton Inn is, shows up as sixty-nine or sixty-four connections, each one's an individual connection?
Yeah, I don't think that's individual rooms, I think that's the, you know.
That's EDU count then?
Yes.
Not individual rooms?
Not individual rooms, it's EDU's count, you know, that's based on, likely based on what they submitted. And the city took in the, the, the numbers, but I, I bet it's based on, I, I would imagine it's based off of the plumber count from, that went over to, to EWP.
Right.
They got those number of EDUs and then they sent that over to us. Yeah, so that's, that's a pretty big number then.
Hampton Inn was sixty-two and the other two were.
Yeah, I just, I just, the number just jumped down.
Yeah.
And it kind of skews the, you know, the overall report because if I, you kind of look at that to see what kind of developments going on in the valley and then all of a sudden it's sixty-two.
And I'm sure there's more room than sixty-two, right? So, I don't, I'm not.
Jim, I have one quick question when you're done. Um, with the replenish updates for stakeholders, have we done a presentation to the Big Bear Association of Realtors by chance?
We've done one in the past, but not in a while.
Okay, we might want to consider it, I'll, I'll reach out to you and let you know. I've had a couple Realtors reach out just asking what I thought of the project overall, and that might be a good touch point.
And just to, um, just everybody knows too, we were out, uh, we have an RFP out for design services for the, the project itself. So we're out right now, uh, that one, I'm on the nineteen, the nineteen.
I'm good, oh yeah.
So, uh, so we should be visiting in November. Uh, for the design of the replenishment project. And the release of the IR is quite good. The release, we're expecting the document in mid-November, um, to be released and, um, likely to go over with the, uh, present, uh, have a presentation to the board in December. Uh, and then of course adoption in January, that's where we think, January, depending on, it takes forty-five days after a release of the document.
Just, oh, Ted, I was in Sacramento, uh, I was accosted by many engineering companies regarding our project. But I think I forwarded them to you.
Yes.
Did you make a connection with them, I'm just curious if they reached out to me again?
Have they reached out to you again?
No, no, they haven't. Or they, you know, it's because they were, they were so interested in the project.
Yeah.
I know the details and, and I had to keep telling them, I'm not an engineer. I'm a policymaker.
Well, um, and we put it out there, of course we've publicized it, I'll double check to make sure that we've got to those companies that do send me. Um, but it's been posted, it's out there.
That's all, that's all.
Yeah, it's out there, it's been, uh, it's in a newspaper, all over the internet, so, yes, out there. Walsh. On page three. You talked about discussing the sleep on portion of the project. I thought she wanted to stick the backboard out of the picture. There's still a discretion happening just in, in, uh, in case we decide to move over with that portion of the project. We didn't want to, you know, we didn't want to, let's say, exit out altogether for some reason. It, um, you know, if we decided to move over that section.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's still like requirement that it gets audited or, sort of like biological report down on every year, something like that.
Yeah, so there's already requirement already that we do certain things with regard to the, uh, stickleback pond itself. Um, and, you know, Glenn knows probably more about what exactly is required on a yearly basis, his, him and his staff handle that in. Um, but for, uh, the replenishment big bear project, there was requirement monitoring. And the monitoring, uh, uh, itself was the turn to just using, into putting this water in there. And as opposed to an in lieu process that we were, uh, was talking about. So, you know, we wanted to keep the option open and so that's why we didn't remove it from the EIR or, um, the overall plan itself. Any other questions?
Okay. Uh, consent calendar, uh, I'll speak, uh, take the B, we want to take our committee meeting October third.
Larry, Vanessa, do you want to speak to that?
Larry, I'm happy to add comments, but Larry, if you want to first.
Speak up, whoever holds your peace.
Larry, go ahead if you want to add something, I can add a couple comments if you'd like.
I'm deferring to you.
Um, I just want to say thank you actually to Bridget and Dave, a great presentation, I had watched it before, um, when Bridget presented at the, uh, forgive me, the emergency meeting, um, a few months ago and just very well done. Went over an entire overview of the entire project, finances, um, all the grants received, just pretty much everything and anything you want with the project. We did have two members of the public attend, which was fantastic. Uh, they asked a lot of good questions and I think they went away with, uh, better understanding of the project overall and plus had contact information on where to go for future questions. Um, and then we also got a chance to go through the, um, full RFP, which I was very impressed at the level of detail and expertise that, uh, Dave and Bridget and our team put in. So, um, just thank you for spending the time and, um, I'm very impressed. And if the community, if the entire community could see that presentation, albeit a smaller condensed version, um, I think everybody would just, uh, know what amount of level of work is going into this project. Oh, and the one takeaway is that there are too many acronyms and that we're going to have a cheat sheet at some point of, uh, spelling out the details on what those acronyms are, but thank you again very much.
All right, thank you, any questions? All right, moving on to consent calendar, all items, all items listed on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion at appropriate time. There will be no separate discussion of these items, the detailed discussion is necessary. Any government board member may request an item being removed from the consent calendar and considered dislocated. Do you have our board members wish to remove any items?
I'll move you on.
Move on.
Second.
Motion second.
Director Harry?
Hi.
Director Mo?
Hi.
Director Walsh?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Miller.
Hi. Now, I, A, appointment of government board chair and vice chair.
So this, so this is, uh, the board's opportunity to, uh, basically work, reorganize. You know, we do this again in February, um, and so this is the opportunity for the board to reorganize. And, um, basically appoint a chair and a vice chair, uh, until February, which then the board will have another opportunity to do that again. So, um, you know, you can see in the staff report, the, um, the previous history about, uh, with regard to chair and vice chair. And the board has its, uh, options to, to.
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, sometimes for whatever reason, these issues can be a little sticky, so I'll try to have it unsticky if I can. Um, I, I think the best we can do at this point is actually, uh, to have Larry to fill the, the position of chairman, uh, filling John's position as if he was here and then have us reorganized entirely when it comes to February. And Jim, have you remained as a vice chair? Can you do that though, I don't, I don't think you can.
Larry has not been on the board for twelve months yet, so.
Twelve, it feels like twelve years.
Yeah. Eligible for chair, but he is eligible for vice chair.
I got my little blue pen.
For the one year? I'm so sorry, then yes, you are eligible.
I'm sorry, I was a little frightened. No, he, he's got his, yeah, Larry's got his one year, so that's, that is.
I, I did that, Larry's fine with that, that's fine with me, certainly.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
That's my motion.
Rick, if that's a motion, oh, I authored it.
All right, so did you, did you hear that, Vanessa?
Yes, so Larry, Larry has chair, keep Jim as, uh, vice chair.
We have to, we have to have a motion in a second on each position, so this is the motion for the chair.
Okay, so motions and second for the chair.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Director Harry?
Hi.
Director Mo?
Hi.
Director Walsh?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Miller.
Hi. I need a motion for vice chair.
Well, you're already. I don't need anything.
So it stays.
It's the same, so.
Okay. Well, I'll have everybody speeding up and start on the next one, okay? Yeah. Okay, and since you're business. Kind of report officially your end of year, twenty-one comes here.
We need to do ten-eight.
Ten.
If I do ten-eight, then?
No, not yet.
That was.
I'm for ten-eight, they're a permanent governing board member to the administrative committee.
So, so we are short, obviously, um, a body for the administrative committee. Um, it's at the board's, uh, leisure to, to pick somebody to put on that. We've given you an idea of who's been on, excuse me, yeah. Uh, who's been on the, the board and the vacancies and which committee each member's on at this moment. Um, I believe Mr. Russo has been placed on our board. Um, so the, the board can consider Mr. Russo for an administrative committee, uh, to put on administrative committee. Um, I also know, oh, Mr. Walsh is very young, so that, that, uh, you guys can do what you want there. We just need one more body. For that committee. So you, you can assign work, because he's not here, you can assign work to him. I think that's always fine.
Questions for board members?
Vote a call wise. Has he been sworn onto the board or is that not done because it's filling in from another?
Yeah, so he is not sworn on our board. Yeah, he is sworn at CSD, so he's just appointed here.
And it, it occurred to me, I believe he said, he was going to be flying to Idaho, so maybe that's why he's not here.
It could be, he may be in a plane or flying hard, I'm not sure really.
Well, I had a question, what, what are the duties of the administrative committee? I think I've been on it a one before.
Yeah, we were looking at that earlier, um. Oh, okay. Yeah, a lot of, it, it's, a lot of times it has to do with, um, table organization, um, there was, uh.
The GM evaluation.
Yeah, GM, GM evaluation, uh, see. The, uh, development and hiring of managerial level employees, those kind of, um, those kind of, uh, considerations are made by the admin committee.
Well, this, this very good is a result of John Green.
It is.
So he has, he has, at CSD, I would, I would move that, uh, you know, Mr. Russo take it simply because he's the man person.
Just to throw a monkey wrench, I asked him this morning if he's interested, he said no.
Like I said, you have to be your objective.
So how many? How many members do you have a year at this?
Usually it's less than five, but we do need to schedule an admin committee pretty soon before the December meeting. So we do need somebody to be there with the net.
You need to schedule one, I'm sorry, then.
Before the December meeting.
Before December meeting.
I hesitate since he's, he was not interested to put you on and then have him not attend.
Yeah.
As in tonight.
Does that mean you're volunteering?
Yeah, I was gonna say Larry, if, uh, if you're nominated, would you vote against yourself?
Majority rules though.
I, I'll withdraw my motion on that one, or did you make the motion?
You made it.
I'll withdraw my motion. You have any?
I would, I'll, I'll add that I do feel that the CSD needs to be represented since they're not on any of the other committees except for the replenish. So, uh, I would nominate, uh, Director Walsh.
I have a first and second in discussion. All right, we have roll call please.
Director Harry?
Hi.
Director Mo?
Hi.
Director Walsh?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Miller.
Hi.
Chair will yes.
There we go back, yeah. Item to be, uh, in report, this will be in the thirty of twenty-three.
Yeah, so this is actually Christine Beck, she's going to be with, uh, annual financial report for our end of year. That's why I'm. Down the can, I'm gonna swear around.
I suppose it could just be batteries, huh?
Oh, it could be.
I can go over there and do that, it'd be funny.
Yeah, why don't you do it from there?
It just, it started first with that, I thought. Up and running, so during this presentation, we will, we will be looking at the agency's actual performance compared to final budget for the fiscal year which ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Sorry, it cut off a little bit, um, brief summary of the agency's performance compared to budget. Revenue were on budget, operating revenue were on budget, operating expenses are six percent below budget. Operating expenses are six percent below budget, including gas adjustments primarily related to pension and O T. Nine percent below budget, not including gas adjustments. Capital expenditures were lower due to timing and cash flow ended higher than budget, and we'll discuss this further. Financial, um, items impacting performance, lower operating expenses, um, just under three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Higher net non-operating income expense. Just over five hundred and eighteen thousand and replenished big hair capital contributions of just under two hundred and ten thousand. Changes to the budget. Near the beginning of the fiscal year, the governing board approves carryover appropriations for budgeted projects. That were not completed in the prior fiscal year and will be completed in the current fiscal year. Additionally, the governing board may approve new appropriations during the fiscal year. For unfinished projects that needed, need to be completed during that year. Carryovers from fiscal year twenty-two were just over twenty-three thousand in operating expenses. Which consisted of electrical work and equipment repairs. Capital expenditure carryovers were just over one point five million and were primarily for the grid system rehab project. New appropriations during the year resulted in a five percent increase to operating expenses. Those appropriations were seventy-five thousand for the oxidation ditch rotor shaft replacement. Thirty thousand dollars for the sledge building concrete floor repair. Seventy-nine thousand for the retarded and retarded provision, thirty-one thousand for the great study. And fifty thousand for store name repairs. A new appropriation in capital expenditure resulted in a one percent increase and was for additional funds for the L P S generator and fuel system project. The budget referenced in subsequent slides reflects a final budget taking into account the appropriations listed on this slide. This is a snapshot of the income statement. And we will go over these items, variances in the next slides, and we'll just stop here for a moment. Operating revenues were down just under twenty thousand or, or way compared to budget. This was primarily a result of gas B eighty-seven adjustments to rental income partially offset by other revenue. As a result of gas B eighty-seven adjustments for leases. Lease income is included in non-operating income and is still accounted for in the overall change in net position. When adding lease revenue back into operating revenues, rental income increased by just under fifty-four thousand with a twenty percent positive change when compared to budget. The net effects is a one percent increase in total operating revenues over budget. Super user rate drive the annual charges, which are the agency's largest operating revenues. The average annual rate increase over a ten-year period is two point eight percent. Increasing to three point eight percent over a five-year period and four point four percent over a three-year period. Rate increases have generally trended at or near inflation. With the addition of the replenished repair project, the average will increase and rates will be above inflation through fiscal year twenty twenty eight. In order to build required reserves and adequate funds to cover debt requirements related to the project. So operating expenses. As you can see, there were savings across all Y items. We will discuss these savings in the following slides. Flexion treatment at disposal was nine percent or approximately one hundred and thirty-seven thousand below budget. The largest savings were in repairs and replacements, power and sledge removal. Repair and replacement expense was below budget by thirty-nine thousand or ten percent. Due mostly to timing associated with multiple repairs and replacements, including. The clarifier lighting replacements and clarifier free repair as well as budgeted repairs which were not needed. Planned repairs for the irrigation system in Lucerne Valley and fire generators were not necessary. Additionally, the rotor replacement project came in under budget by fifteen thousand. Lower solar purchases related to weather and the difference in costs suspected of the net metering agreement compared to actual costs. For power production resulted in power coming in fifty, forty-five thousand or nine percent below budget. Sledge removal was below budget by fifty-seven thousand or eighteen percent. The agency removed three thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven sledge tons, which was one thousand sixty-five fewer tons compared to budget. So let's talk about flows. Average dry, dry weather flows are seven hundred and eighty-eight million gallons as evidenced by the orange line on the graph. When looking at the ten-year average, flows are approximately seven hundred and two million gallons. Eighty-six million gallons less than the average dry weather flows. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three winter storms resulted in flows coming in at nine hundred and twenty-six point six million gallons. Which is greater than the dry weather flows average of one hundred and thirty-eight point six million gallons. Higher flows will affect the variable rates charged to member agencies in subsequent years.
It'll be.
How does that affect? A race in future year? Um, so the flows are based off of a three-year average. Okay, so when you add that to the last two years.
Okay. A little more, yeah, um. It, with expenses down, essentially, column O and N, expenses down. Uh, and flows up, you would say, going in, other, those other costs would have gone up as well.
Yeah, and that, and that has to do with the fact that we, we saw an increase in flow rates in, you know, a lot of I N I. But you're not, the concentration levels of like B O D and those kind of things go down when we see the increase in flow, so it doesn't really affect. Any, except for, you know, maybe some pumping costs and those kind of things, just get rid of the actual water itself.
So it makes me wonder if we're charging the agencies correctly based upon flow.
We are, because we do take it into consideration at the end of the year, right, we take the three-year average. And then we charge them based on that three-year average. It's, and it's based on our, our expenses.
Right, makes sense. It does, but our expenses went down.
Our expenses went down, right, but we, but we all does is go to the next, you know, we're, we're doing a three-year average. So the next year, when we do our average, it'll, it'll go. It will either stay the same or we won't have to increase as much. Does that make sense? Not only do we see a four percent increase, uh, if we set less flow, but, and we had less expenses. Then those numbers would normally go down and might be, you know, uh, uh, three point seven, five percent increase instead.
Right, right, well, I get that, but with flows up and expenses down, I'm trying to equate in my mind, what happened? Was it something else special that I didn't, it's not obvious?
Super dilution.
Yeah, it was just, you know, sledge and down.
The main is the sledge. I see fifty-seven thousand sledge, because you're not getting as much. Of the solids coming in plant, it was super diluted, so.
Well, then it also goes back to, and this is an issue we've had with the city forever with I N I. It should, we'd be charged more because it's I N I and it's actually less, it's less B O D. Because it's I N I that's flowing through, maybe we should be charged less because there's more liquid going through.
Yeah, but the, the pumping costs from the green horse, our pumps, which we did for, uh. Uh, on March ninth, Halloween, May, so the, the, the electrical costs were very high to do that.
It looked like power costs were down.
Yeah, power costs, those power flows are down because of the, so. Um, when, when we originally a, approached Fair Val Electric about the solar. They told us the rate structure was, uh, basically time of use, and we were gonna buy it back from them. At the cost that we, um, when we used the power. But what ended up happening is we ended up with a net meter instead, a true net meter. Which was not expected, so what ended up happening is we put in the budget for, for kind of use. But when we actually got the bills and we checked them several times, we got.
So that's the fluke.
The savings between.
Okay, that's, that's, we won't see that again.
You won't see that again.
Okay.
Because all we did was adjust the budget to, to, because we now know that we're getting a true net meter.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, and then, you know, they go up three percent in the cost and then, you know, we went down in this and we have a three percent increase in buying solar power. You know, I mean, all these things start adjusting themselves as we start to, you know, move around, but. We, we never pass cost on to our member agencies more than we, you know, we're not here to trip a problem. So we never, yeah.
What's the J P A we're supposed to look at for our constituents?
Oh, oh, what a question, what's that?
I gotta ask the question and make sure that.
Most definitely.
Yeah, I, I usually do every year.
Yeah, and you'll see it in the, in the budget presentation coming in February. Yeah?
Okay.
Okay, any more questions? Explaining Gatsby sixty-eight and seventy-five pension-related adjustments. Salaries and benefits were below budget by eighty-six thousand and forty-three percent. Primarily due to lower medical premium expenses as well as lower premiums for dental, vision and life insurance. When accounting for Gatsby sixty-eight and seventy-five adjustments, salaries and benefits were below budget by just under thirty-nine thousand and one percent. I wanted to talk a little bit about pension liability. There are several factors that affect pension actuarial measurements. The factors include an experience differing from that anticipated by economic or demographic assumptions. Changes in economic or demographic assumptions. Changes in actuarial policies, changes in plan provisions or applicable law. And differences between the required contributions determined by the valuation and the actual contribution made by the agency. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, Calpers Board adopted a new strategic. Asset allocation which reduced the discount rate to six point eight percent from seven percent and reduced the price inflation. From two point five percent to two point three percent. Additionally, modifications to retirement rates, termination rates, mortality rates and rates of salary increases were adopted by that board. The new assumptions are reflected in the valuation report for the June thirty, twenty twenty-two measurement date. When talking about funded ratio, a funded ratio of less than one hundred percent implies that in addition to normal costs. The agency will be required to make payments toward the unfunded accrued liability or U A L. Normal cost rate is based on a percent of payroll and is paid regularly throughout the year. U A L payments are paid annually to take advantage of the discount of a half year of interest. As a result of the Pension Reform Act, Calpers members are classified as either classic or P E P R A, Public Employees Pension Reform Act members. Classic members are those that entered the retirement system prior to January first, two thousand thirteen. And P E P R A members are those that entered the retirement system on or after that day. For classic members, the funded ratio as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two decreased to seventy-five point three percent. From the prior year funded ratio of eighty-seven point five percent. As a result of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two investment returns of negative seven point five percent. The actuarial valuation sets the minimum required contributions for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Calculations for the funding target reflect the expected long-term investment return of six point eight percent. We know that the preliminary return for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three was five point eight percent. One percent lower than the expected return of six point eight percent. When factoring in Calpers discount rate of seven, six point eight percent. And the twenty-two, twenty-two preliminary turn of five point eight percent, the estimated funded status will be reduced. The lower investment return will not impact the agency's contribution rates until fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and will be included in that budget. I would like to note that it was mentioned at the Calpers Ed Forum. That the return for twenty, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three did come slightly higher, so that was good news.
Who was it?
That, that, um, return came in slightly higher than the five point.
You know, the number was.
It wasn't published yet, they just heard it, so.
Just a quick question, didn't we have a discussion about an eighty percent funded ratio?
Sorry.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we always shoot for like that ninety percent range.
Ninety percent?
Ninety percent is what the range that we normally shoot for. Um, and obviously in twenty-one, we were eighty-seven. And now we're at seventy-five, and it does vary based on, you know, basically rate of return. Um, and that's a lot, that's a, a lot that took place here, is that rate of return was lower than, than anticipated.
Yeah. So, that's right, so are these three-year? Windows? I mean, by the time you get this figured out, they will change their numbers on you.
They always do, yes.
So the numbers you're looking at right now, is that a? Three fiscal year anticipation and then they drop the oldest one and bring on a new one?
When they, you're saying when they calculate out your.
What they think they're gonna make, which is usually a thing to see. Okay.
Yeah, so, so their assumptions are over a twenty-year projection. Um, because, as you know, when you invest, if you look very short-term, it's, it's quite volatile. So when they look over twenty years, it's kind of a smoothing. So that six point eight percent return that they're expecting is based on their look at twenty-year look. Now, with the volatility, I think we had twenty-one point two percent in fiscal year twenty. Twenty.
Twenty point one.
It, it looked really good, yes.
Yeah, and then we have negative seven point five, so, so when you look short-term. It's much more volatile, but that, but there, I mean, this is a very large fund, so they're, they're looking the long term.
Is that where your ninety percent becomes difficult, is because you can't anticipate what they're gonna do?
I mean, you shoot for ninety percent, because if you go to a hundred percent and we get a twenty-one percent return, now we're a hundred and seven percent, right? So it, it's never really something you wanna hit to get that, because then, you know, these are funds you can't. Most cases, you can't pull money back out, right? So that's the, these funds, so you shoot for ninety percent, so that way you can stay within that, that range. But you're shooting for ninety percent, so, so when you have situations like this. Where you get a negative seven percent return and, and then in the following year, and then you end up with a seventy-five. You know that you're still in that range to get close to that ninety percent. Should you get, you know, the following years start getting a better, better return on the investment? That makes sense? You're trying to stay within this ballpark number.
And stay light on your feet.
And stay light, and the other part is you don't wanna. Pass, you know, you don't wanna do a rate increase, so that way you can get your fund, your unfunded liability up there and then. You know, affect your repayers because you ask, you ask more money than you need because you're above ninety percent and then your return rate is, you know, it's just super slow.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Right, another question then.
Yeah.
Um, and the many of you can, so when, when they're actually calculating this out, you're looking at the rate of inflation. Um, do they actually, or is it take it into consideration the rate of inflation based upon these ratios? What I mean by that is, um, when pensions are paid out, I think there's, they're tied to inflation, so that the pension payout goes out. Which means they have less money to invest during the next particular year. Is it all, is that how they watch the whole thing out, probably moping these numbers? So why don't they just sort of market it and investments, it's gotta be also inflation.
Yeah, so, so, uh, like I said, there's, there's several factors. So economic factors, demographic factors, so your demographic factors that they look at are mortality. Um, you know, when people are reaching their retirement age, um.
Yeah. Yeah, how many years of service?
That go in to that figure is not. See, that is correct.
That is a piece.
Yes.
And then we actually hire an actor or.
Well, these are the Calpers.
Right.
Group, in that group.
That, their, their numbers, but, but we hire our own to, to make sure that we're trying to stay in that range and. Get our numbers right on. And they take all of those factors into place, you know, when people will. You know, retire, when you, but their age, their demographics, all of those things come into play. They, they know, they know when we're gonna kick the bucket. When, you know, when you're gonna start playing, and they know these things. They're pretty good at it.
So, thanks.
So for the, the funded ratio as of June thirty, twenty twenty-two decreased to eighty-nine point eight percent of the prior year funded ratio of one hundred and seven point three. As a result of the negative investment returns. as a result of the negative investment returns. So on this one, we are just about at the ninety percent. This with O P E S is for health benefits at retirement. You know, O P E S normal cost is calculated as a dollar amount for each employee each year based on their current age and expected years of service before retirement. Unlike the pension program, O P E S is not tied to payroll. However, normal cost is designed to increase each year at the same rate that aggregate payroll is expected to increase. There are four factors that can influence the current year's unfunded liability. Those factors are benefit changes, assumption changes, plan liability experience, and investment experience. Between June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one and June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, there were no benefit changes and no credit experience was required to be determined. However, investment experience was negative and the assumption for future earnings decreased from seven point oh five percent to six point one five percent. The lower trust value and higher liability resulted in the increase in the U A L and in lower funded ratio. The O P E S plan funded ratio decreased from ninety point four three percent to sixty six point nine one percent.
Honest question, so you've been paying off O P E S, trying to pay it down because you get a better rate, so I assume that we'll have a, not such a perfect rate um, coming up, correct? So we were paying down the, the unfunded liability in O P E S.
Yeah.
In order to get a better rate, but now it's dropped significantly.
And dropped significantly as of the, uh, investor.
But I thought you skipped one of those years.
So we can anticipate pension costs and O P E S costs.
Wasn't, wasn't there a skip of last year, the year before?
Yeah, we just, we just skipped this, we were holding up this year. We had, uh, we'd asked the board for two hundred thousand dollars to work towards our unfunded liability on this piece. But because of the, um, force main that comes from the city and the problems that we were having, we didn't wanna spend that cash until we figured out exactly what was gonna happen with that line. So we've been holding up that cash, and until we have a clear evaluation, which we, we've got a good idea now, then, um, we were just talking about today about starting to make, uh, that payment on, on that unfunded liability piece.
What a significant, it went up a million dollars.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're not gonna pay a million dollars then, so two hundred thousand will help if you look.
Exactly. The change in the discount rate of return, I mean, that's a big change from seven point oh five percent, this is from one five percent. Also full percentage. That kind of money, so, so that had a lot to do with it.
Yeah, we're, you know, we, I think, I think this, I think we had, it is a two or three, I can't remember, two or three things left that we could make.
I think it's two.
Two more. So we already, um, the board already gave an action there, there's been another quarter album. As, and, and, um, and the two hundred thousand that we were going to make was one of that four hundred thousand that we didn't. So, you know, obviously it wouldn't have a huge effect on that percent, but that might break it up right now to, you know, seventy-three or seventy-four percent, something like that. It, it's just something that we're gonna keep, you know.
There's no way we could ever get out of this program.
It, no, unfortunately, we're, you know, it's one of those programs that you get into and, you know, like, oh. Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's pretty much wherever we get it, I mean.
More questions? The contractual services professional were below budget by just under seventy-four thousand or thirty-seven percent, primarily driven by lower legal expenses. A delay in H VAC maintenance contract bidding and award, along with a delay in landscaping services due to weather, were primarily responsible for the variance in contractual services and other. Additionally, E and P services and labor for electrical were budgeted for the period but were mostly unused. This resulted in a forty-two thousand or thirty-five thousand period when you shared the budget. There are slight variations across the line items for permits and fees and administration. Other operating expenses was below budget by twenty-two thousand and thirty-five percent, primarily driven by lower education and training expense due to training that was budgeted but not attended, as well as lower advertising expenses. Non-operating income expenses have a positive variance of just over five hundred and eighteen thousand compared to the budget and was driven by much higher non-operating incomes, greater by six hundred and twenty, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, due mostly to grant reinsurance related to replenished figure, which was partially offset by higher non-operating expense of a hundred and three thousand associated with financing costs and interest expense for replenished pre-返清 and G S A administrative expenses that were not budgeted. These revenue was budgeted as rental income in the operating budget, but as a result of the Gatsby eighty-seven, was moved to non-operating income. Do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
On the board packet, page three, interest paid down, long-term debt says a hundred and forty-two, nine fifty-five. Here it says a hundred and fifty-four, four seven. Which was not my point so much as, how did we end up paying more than the budget?
For interest, the budgeted, because we added a replenished figure loan?
Okay.
Okay. New connections to this is though were higher than budget by fourteen connections coming in at fifty-nine versus forty-five hundred and. The pension average is fifty-five per year, not counting non-recurring connections. Non-recurring connections account for new multi-unit buildings in businesses such as cargo projects and hotels, to name a few. Recurring connections account for new single-family buildings. So to your point, Director Miller, about the hotel, when we figure our average, we're not gonna figure those fifty-two connections in there. Lower capital investment, higher cash flow operations, higher connection fee revenue, and the initial percentage of bigger capital contributions. End of your cash balance came in three point seven million higher than the final budget. Timing was the greatest factor with three point one million in carryover from creations, which included capital of just over three million and operating expenses of forty-nine thousand. Six hundred and thirty-three thousand and other includes lower operating expenses of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, higher connections of fifty-eight thousand, and capital contributions of two hundred and ten thousand. So we're talking about, uh, lower capital investments due to timing, so we had capital carryover of just over three billion for projects that were not completed in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The projects that were completed are listed there, they will, that money is carried over in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We also defer the monitoring while we have and reduce the scope of the headers and chat files. No question?
Was this all prepared before the change in the room?
The, the room, it was this thing, it was, it is, that, that's actually in next year.
Current debt outstanding is just under five point nine million. Fiscal year two thousand nineteen includes the addition of the two thousand and eighteen installment purchase agreement for the Bell Press. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three includes the addition of the replenished bigger bridge loan. The debt service coverage is the agency's ability to cover debt service with net revenues. Current debt service coverage is three point four more times, giving the agency just over four million in debt capacity. Meaning, the agency could borrow four million and still meet the agency's target debt service coverage of two ties, which is higher than the covenant level of one point two times as determined by the agency's current loan covenants. The agency is financially strong, generates adequate, adequate cash flow to maintain its structure and cover debt service payments that are recovered is three point one more times. Excess debt capacity is estimated at four million and reserves are fully funded. Challenges ahead, so these are things that we need to be looking at, managing writing costs. Some of the things that are gonna cause writing, could cause writing costs are market volatility and its impact on ditching and O P E S liabilities, price inflation, higher salaries and benefits expense, and aging infrastructure. So that concludes my presentation, and I won't do any questions.
Any questions for board members? That's done.
Thank you very much.
No questions, but I just wanted to say, echo Rick, great job. This is the transparency and the detail that I always look for in financials and to, to Rick's earlier point, this is who I look to as, as far as Barwa goes to um, setting the bar, and you guys do such a great job, and congratulations, Christine, nice job.
At one year.
Well, I, just like I, um, when Brad said something about this, it's her first radio. I guess I never told him that I've been honest with the city for five years.
We were gonna still be, I, I knew that, I was like, eh, I love my baby.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, anyway, uh, I don't fancy a German, I'll wait for the twenty-second, and twenty seventeen. A scheduled stressful meeting. Is, any recommendations or?
Yes, so the only, we know that, um, the, one of our new board members isn't available till the eighteenth, is that right?
No, Tom Dodson.
Oh, Tom Dodson, uh, excuse me, our consultant that is gonna help, uh, present the E I R to the board isn't available till after the eighteenth of December. So the board wants a presentation on the, uh, E I R, it would have to be any time after the eighteenth. Can't do that.
I don't think I can.
If, if day, night, weekends.
Probably two days in there, maybe nineteenth or the twentieth. We're, we're.
Completely open to the board's suggestions and. But he could, is he, is he back on the eighteenth, or can you have the eighteenth, or?
He comes back on the eighteenth.
So you can do it on the nineteenth?
We could do it on the nineteenth.
Does he want daytime or nighttime?
It does not matter.
It doesn't matter, it's really up to the, the board to decide, and he'll be here.
I guess time doesn't matter, I mean, I'm just more concerned about the, the date, so. So, the nineteenth works for me.
My calendar's open on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
You got first did, so it's open.
So then, um, night, day, night, I mean, you're retired, so I'll prefer the, for you and.
I, I mean, I prefer morning sometime, but.
Okay, that's, that works better for you than mine. Yeah, it's perfect, uh, so, ten, ten o'clock, is that?
Yep.
That work, ten, ten?
That sounds great. Yep, that sounds great. Tuesday the nineteenth, correct?
Yes, the nineteenth.
I'll second that.
Director Herrick?
Hi.
Director Mo?
Hi.
Director Walsh?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Miller.
Hi. On this announcement, you're gonna manage your comments. No additional comments. Everybody board member comments. All right, see you then, and you all are here on the speed and, uh, six twenty-five.
Right, have a good night, everybody.
Good night, and hope you go better.